Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order the Everett City Council Meeting of September 14th, 2022, and welcome everyone to the City Council Chambers. The City Council is conducting our weekly council meeting hybrid. This allows us to reach members of our community who wish to participate via Zoom or those who wish to attend in person. It is our hope to continue this format to be as accessible as possible to our community. For those who wish to participate in a future meeting via Zoom, you may find the public comment registration form on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Click on the register here to provide comment via Zoom link, and you will come to a form which you must fill out completely if you wish to provide public comment at a future meeting. After the form is submitted, you'll receive an email confirmation with the Zoom link and the phone number to the meeting. Participants must submit this form at least 30 minutes prior to the meeting. If they're submitted after 30 minutes before the meeting, they'll not receive the Zoom link and number to speak, but may participate the day of the meeting by coming in person to the council chambers. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Excused?
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogely?
Here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Vice President Tuie?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. Councilmember Schwab, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? We stand?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Vice President Tuie, will you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes. The City Council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Staukchi people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 7th?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tuie, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Abstain.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Abstain.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak for public comment this evening?
Good evening, President Stonecifer. We do not have anyone signed up to speak, but we do have one written comment submitted by Janine Desmurey, and I provided this to council administration and to the clerk to be part of the record.
Thank you. We will move on now to council comments and liaison reports. We're going to start with Councilmember Fosse.
Thanks. I guess with the mayor and deputy mayor, I'll speak to Lori. We had previously requested that we have a kind of vague schedule of events of what's planned to become before council for the next projected 12 months. I haven't seen anything as far as calendar items presented to us yet. And so I wanted to check in to see if that was planned, even a simple one-pager of anticipated items for the next 12 months in the near future.
I can speak to that now.
Thank you.
We do not calendar specific dates, but what we could do is take a look at items that we know historically come to council on an annual basis. But for example, if you ask me what was on the calendar for November, we do not have that calendar yet prior because there's so much work that goes into putting those calendar items out. However, I'm happy to look at what we know is coming consistently to council, probably not date specific, but a range of dates, maybe by quarter or something, if you'd like that.
Even having, in addition to the general things that happen beyond budget approval times and when we expect those to come, I know that there is some advance notice, for instance, when it came to the legislative changes and anticipation, that that would come probably before us in the fall or September. Even a vague kind of calendar would help us with our constituents that are reaching out over different topics and for us to plan a little bit ahead as a council, especially those of us that are left out of any agenda planning. So those topics would be of interest. And I would really, really appreciate getting something like that, even if it's vague and it's just by month of what you anticipate to come before us the next 12 months, by next week?
I'm not sure I can get to you that quickly, but I will work on something, and I also cannot commit that it will be holistic. I can, I can, I know there are certain things coming, but I cannot estimate a lot of the agenda items 12 months in advance.
And again, whatever you can provide is helpful, but we know when the traffic camera next action is likely going to be, and having that kind of in a visual projected, this probably month is going to be when that's going to happen, some sort of action, even if it's tentative, would be helpful.
Absolutely. Although I will tell you, just today, I learned when we think that will come back to council, and it's probably coming in the next eight weeks. But just so you know, I didn't know a month ago that it would be back here because there's so much pre-work that goes into the RFPs, the assessments. I know Councilmember Ryan received some information just today, I think, on email, specifically about that topic. But that is the first notice that our staff were thinking they were going to be ready to come back to council.
Yes. A vague tentative idea would still be helpful for council. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Just one thing to report on. Today with Councilmember Vogely, I visited the multifamily portion of the Riverfront Development, not something I had been very familiar with before, an area just east of I-5, if you already know about it, was formerly two mills and a landfill. And the developments so far are the towns at Riverfront, townhouses at the north end, and the Overlook, single-family development at the south end. The really big news currently is the construction of the mixed-use development, five stories of rental units over one tall story of commercial and community space going up. So a good thing to see, constructed by Shelter Holdings, especially on a site with multiple challenges and a long and varied history. And actually, the glaciers left us a lot of strange soil and conditions underneath as well. And the story is as much the long journey to make it work as the development or as the nature of the site, you know, work that the city did to clean up that site and persistent work by Shelter over years to help realize housing there and hopefully some really good mixed-use developments, some retail and other commercial development. We also, we met with Eric of Shelter Holdings and the construction manager for the site, Renee. And it was really a heartening thing to see a young woman doing the full site management of a tricky site like this. Having worked in carpentry and electrical installations in commercial construction years ago, I know that women face a lot of extra hurdles in this business. And as for Eric and Shelter Holding, I'm impressed by their consistency in this and wish them all the success in especially attracting commercial tenants and services to the area. So good to see that happening. We need that kind of range of additional housing very much, help hold housing prices or housing prices in check here. So happy to see that and appreciate that tour. And thanks also to Mr. Ernesti for arranging it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogely?
Good evening, everybody. First, before I forget, because I didn't tell anybody beforehand, I will be asking to hear just a smidge about the MOU for EPD and DOC. That was just a lot of ABCs there, sorry. So, but last night was the last community meeting for Westmont Holly Neighborhood Association, unless somebody from that neighborhood steps up and takes the reins. Linda Warbonnet had to step down because, you know, it's been four years or something. So I'm putting the guilt out into the community to bring it up because I can't do it because I'm up here. So that was sad, but also it's what happens, right? Everybody needs to move on sometimes. On the same night, there was a, shoot, Fairway Estates. I think I'm getting the name wrong. But anyhow, another community meeting, and a lot was brought up. But kind of according to what Councilmember Fosse just mentioned, like, how do we know what's going on when? It was cool that I was able to go back over my notes from being on the Transportation Advisory Committee and reading something somewhere that the signs for like Fourth Avenue West and Evergreen Way are getting greened again. They're very, 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 very faded. And that's something that's coming up just after the striping is finished. So I'm just letting some people out there know that drive and walk, that our signs will be getting pretty again. And I got to, yeah, go to the Riverfront today, Riverfront Development. And a couple of things that I want to add to Councilmember Zarlingo's thoughts are that we, as a council, gave, well, they are using multifamily tax exemption in the units that are being built. So that is good. Like 20% of the units will be at 80 slash 100% AMI, which is adjusted median income. So that is awesome, in my opinion. And because of the varying soil problems, there has to be a, what do you call it? Sorry, you can help me. Underlayment? An underlayment that just cannot be penetrated, right? So I asked about trees, putting them in the parking lot, and I know we have a tree canopy thing coming up. And lots of people are very excited about trees in Everett. There will not be any tall trees because you have to be very, very specific about what is planted and know what the root structure is. And so I'm just putting that out there now. And then to add onto that, thank goodness we're building out over a landfill that used to be. So we haven't cut down all these, you know, old growth wonderful trees to replace them with asphalt. No. So there's going to be housing and awesome space, and everybody gets to live there. That's my story. Thanks for listening. Moving on.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of things to report. We had a Budget Committee meeting this last week, and I want to congratulate the mayor's staff. It's, the focus was on healthcare costs. And we basically, they proposed a change here a couple of years ago to a clinic style. And I know there's some upfront costs associated with it. But long-term, I think the mayor's staff has put a pretty good proposal, and the projections are going to keep healthcare costs basically better checked than they were without the changes that we made. So I want to thank the city and the staff for doing that. That was a good job on that. So I'm looking forward to, and also it's not just keeping healthcare costs under control, but it's also the services that we provide to our employees, which is really important. They seem to be pretty satisfied with the service so far. So that's really good to hear. Also on the Budget Committee, I apologize for not asking you in that meeting, but when is the council going to see the mayor's proposed budget?
The printed budget comes out in, I believe, mid-October. I don't have a date, but I'd be happy to send that to all the council members so they know when to anticipate that.
Know when to put some time aside to read through it.
That's right.
And then we also had a Public Safety Committee meeting. And if you remember, we, a couple of weeks ago, we got, we had some IT problems, and we were getting a proposal that the, or the continuation of a study that the police department is going through, very in-depth. Instead of going into a lot of details, I know here in the next few weeks, we're going to, the council's going to get the proposal. So I have confidence in the organization, and I appreciate the chief for basically opening up his organization to be evaluated. So I'm looking forward to the results on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Tuie?
Yeah, I've had a busy council week this week with three, all three of my committees have met this week. So the budget, which you already discussed. And this morning, we had our Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting, which was great. And Julie provided an update to us on our current ARPA projects and some potential new ones. And she will be coming, she's hoping to come to full council on 9/28 of this month. And so anyway, so to tell everybody about everything, get all caught up, that was great. And then like Councilmember Schwab just mentioned about the Public Safety Committee this afternoon. And again, we'll have that, they should be finalized, and the final report should be sometime in October. So we look forward to that. There was lots of great information this afternoon. And it'll be great to see the full report with all the little details. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thanks. Good evening, everybody. I joined the Port Gardner Neighborhood Association on Monday, and it was a good showing. And as a reminder, Port Gardner Neighborhood meets every second Monday at Sequoia High School's cafeteria at 7:00 PM. This week, this month, we had two guest speakers. One was Snoamish County Councilmember Megan Dunn, and she's just doing a really awesome job, everybody. Just wanted to put that out there. And I don't know when she sleeps because she's just busy all the time. We also had Brock Howell with the Everett Station District Alliance join, and he shared more about just some updates of work that they're doing with some new murals in the area, work with the light rail alignment, and the collaboration effort that they're working on with Kaiser Permanente, just to make sure that the area is vibrant and being well-planned for when light rail does eventually make it to that area. So looking forward to more on that. Next week kicks off a week without driving through Disability Rights Washington. So just wanted to mention that to folks. Governor Inslee also declared next week a week without driving. So if you have an opportunity to take the bus or transit or walk or bike or use a bird scooter next week instead of driving, definitely give it a go, and please do it safely. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Fosse for her comments today. I think a roadmap would be really, really helpful so that we can plan ahead for what's coming down the pike. I kind of picture it as a living document through like Teams or something that shows the month and what we could or couldn't expect. And with the red light camera example, the presentation that was given in, I think January, had a roadmap in there of when we could expect to have the contracts come back before us, which was why I reached out because I had that little ping in my brain of, I think we were supposed to see those by now. So I reached out and forwarded to Angie to forward to the full council to help with that roadmapping, but I think that'd be helpful. And a roadmap for the budget meetings and whatnot would be great just to plan ahead for, I'll be out of town for one of the council meetings for the National League of Cities. So I'd love to, I'd be disappointed if I couldn't participate in a budget meeting because I'd be serving the city in a different capacity and not able to join in person. So just having that to just plan ahead would be very, very helpful. And last but not least, I would like to say happy birthday to Councilmember Fosse, who obviously turned 36 this week. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And for me, I wanted just to touch a little bit on the Budget Committee. We did meet, this Budget Finance Committee met this week. And as Councilmember Schwab pointed out, we talked a little bit about the Vera Clinic that the city started several years ago. I can't remember, it was three or four years ago. And I think one of the takeaways that I learned in that is how, first of all, it's very accessible to city employees. It's basically a free visit anytime you want to get in there. But also that there are prescriptions available that are also free of charge to city employees. And what we learned is that that's been a very popular benefit of the clinic, and a lot of employees taking advantage of that. So that's great. And then the other, I think, encouraging news is that there is some excess capacity at the clinic, and so the city's looking for other partner or partners that could come in and also help defray some of the costs of the overall facility. So would help mitigate some of the costs that the city's bearing right now. So more to come on that, but it has been a successful venture. And as I recall, when we took it on, it was really about bending the curve. We had this climbing expense curve, and so we flattened it out a little bit. I don't think that it's going away, but certainly it's better than it would have been. And then in the mayor's absence, I'm going to read a proclamation about National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, celebrates and observes the history, culture, and countless contributions of Hispanic people whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, Mexico, Puerto Rico, Cuba, Spain, and the nations of Central and South America. And acknowledging that the term Hispanic is not representative to all those who are from Latin, who are from Latin America. The Hispanic people in our community are a mixture of rich and diverse ethnic groups. And the Bureau of the Census estimates the Hispanic population living in Everett is 16%. And Hispanics are leaders in all areas of our nation and more directly in the Everett community. And in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor the Hispanic individuals and organizations who live and work in the city of Everett, improving the quality of life for all. That now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Franklin hereby proclaims September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all residents to honor the rich history of the Hispanic community.
With that, I will ask, do we have an administrative update this evening?
Just to let council know, next meeting on the 21st, the mayor will be delivering her proposed budget message. It's what she does annually this time of year. Susie Haug, our finance director, will be here to present the revenue and expense information. It's a workshop, and that does kick off the budget kind of engagement more formally with council. So at that time, she'll go through the calendar for the budget meetings for the remainder of the year to move through our 2023 budget process.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
And we have Ramsey Rammernan as our acting, the deputy city attorney is our acting city attorney tonight as well. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Rammernan?
No comment, no effectors.
Thank you. We have nine items on the consent agenda. Councilmember Vogely has asked that item seven be removed to the action agenda. So I will entertain a motion for the eight remaining consent items.
So moved the consent items.
Second, and I just missed because you took out number seven, right?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And now we will take up item seven under our action agenda. Authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding
with the Washington State Department of Corrections regarding collaboration between Everett Police Department and the DOC Community Response Unit personnel. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion. Thank you. Now we will go to questions and comments, starting with Councilmember Vogely.
I was just wondering if Chief Templeman or really any, okay, Deputy Chief DeRousse, just give us a little overview about what it is. And yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
John DeRousse with the Police Department. This is an annual or semi-annual agreement that we have between the Police Department and the Department of Corrections. They embed one of their DOC personnel within our anti-crime team. And it's very helpful because of large portion of the work they do, especially with violent offenders. They will come across people that were formerly incarcerated with DOC, and it gives us a little extra advantage on knowing what the conditions of their release are. They also have, through DOC, a little more authority to talk to, suspend, or revoke their community supervision conditions and make other changes that our act team does not have. What's unique about this year is that in years past, when they go into overtime, the only time that this particular specialist could stay is if they happen to be dealing with a DOC offender at the time. So what we ask is in those rare instances where they're there, they've hit the end of their shift, but they would really like him to stay on, that we cover some of their overtime costs. So you'll see a $10,000, maximum of $10,000 per year OT reimbursement within the contract.
Considering that, who pays this DOC officer while they're working embeddedly?
The Department of Corrections.
Okay.
What's really, what's really, I guess, cool about it is that it's another officer at a time that we're very short-staffed.
Yeah.
We basically get another full-time officer for maybe up to $10,000 a year. He's been a great resource for us.
So it's our, okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted that information. That is all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Item 10, authorize the mayor to sign the participation form, allocation agreement, and the one Washington memorandum of understanding to settle the opioid distributor lawsuit. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Tuie moves the motion.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions or comments on this item before we take the roll? Councilmember Vogely?
Does anybody get to speak to it at all? I don't have anything to say. I'm just curious if somebody wants to say something.
You know, this is a part of a lawsuit that's been going on for many years. The city of Everett was one of the first cities to sue over the opioid crisis. This is a settlement that just deals with the distributors, so it's one piece of it. And it's, this settlement was negotiated by the state, and obviously it needs wide participation, which we do expect to get for it to go through. That's what we're authorizing here, is to participate in it. And we think it's a good deal. We know that the state had started litigation with the distributors, and they chose to settle because it wasn't going so well. So I think that's a good move. We will still have our claims against the manufacturers and the doctors who prescribed it, so.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments?
Just to note, I guess, for people who aren't in detail familiar with this and/or at least less detailed than me, the city has worked hard, as have other cities, in this. This isn't one of those things where, oh, there was some money up for grabs. And there were a lot of trade-offs in this, a lot of complexities, a lot of time invested, difficult choices. And I'm satisfied that the people involved were doing the best they could for the, for the community members who have suffered and continue to suffer so badly from the impacts of these opioids. That's it.
Yes. And I'll just add that, you know, it was very many years ago that I just happened to be reading the Los Angeles Times when I read an interesting article that really gave the story about a drug ring that was sending, this is in the LA Times, that was sending copious amounts of opioids to Snoamish County, and in particular Everett, Washington was named in the article. And I was just completely flabbergasted, and I, at that time, brought this to the attention of the administration. And through a lot of really good legal work from the legal team and support from the council who was there at the time, we really encouraged the administration to file a lawsuit. And so we were one of the first cities in the nation to file a lawsuit against the drug manufacturers. It was very clear to me and anyone who read this article that they knew exactly what was happening and were very happy about it because they were making all sorts of money. And we were the recipients of all that bad, bad news in our community. And we were dealing, at the time, I mean, it's gotten worse since then, but at the time, we were just dealing with an absolutely out-of-control situation with drug use and homelessness. The police department was just strapped to, we couldn't keep up with anything, and it was just a mess. So I'm really proud of the city for having taken the action and being willing to stick our neck on the line because there were a lot of people at the time that were like, oh, boy, that's going to be a complete waste of time. We may have ended up in the same place, but I, in my heart, I feel like the action that the city took at that time really spurred other cities to get on board. I think Tacoma followed very closely after us. And I think Tacoma followed very closely after us, and, and many other cities got on board. I think we'll see other lawsuits for this. We are not going to get nearly what we should be getting out of this lawsuit to make up for the devastation that it's caused in our community. But it is something, and, uh, so I'm very happy to see that this is coming forward and to participate in this. And I'll just ask, uh, Mr. Rammertman, I know there was a range of what we possibly could be expecting to receive from this. Can you remind me what that was?
Um, honestly, I don't have that number with me.
Okay.
I don't want to give a wrong number and be way off at this point.
I'm going to say it was a two million dollar.
It goes closer to three million.
Okay.
But it's, um, I just didn't bring that figure, I apologize.
Thank you. Uh, with that, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
And it's good for our community to know that, uh, any funds that we do receive are all dedicated to go back to the community for health services, for drug abuse, uh, and rehab. So, uh, we need that, so that's good.
There's also the, the money that goes to the state is then, a certain large percentage of that is then going to be doled out in a regional basis. So as a county, as a member of Snoomish County, we'll be able to apply to get some of those funds as well, so it's not just limited to that. And it is all dedicated to go for remediation, as opposed to just money that can be used, so.
Thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Ryan? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Uh, we have two continued public hearing items with action to follow tonight. Uh, the public hearings for these items remains open, so I'll just read each item, and then we'll see if we have any further staff presentation. Uh, item eleven is Council Bill two-two-zero-seven-dash-three-five, the third and final reading, adopt an ordinance amending the Everett Municipal Code to bring it into conformity with recently enacted changes in state housing laws, amending EMC chapters fifteen-point-zero-two land use and project review procedures, nineteen-point-zero-four definitions, nineteen-point-zero-five uses, nineteen-point-zero-eight residential uses and development standards, nineteen-point-one-three specific use standards, and nineteen-point-three-four parking, loading, and access requirements. Uh, Angie, are there any, uh, individuals that would like to speak on this item tonight?
No, there are none.
Thank you. And do we have any further information from you?
There is nothing new from the last meeting. I'd be happy to provide a overview of it for the public, or I, you've, you've been brought along the whole way, and we've had several briefings, so I'll call that option.
Okay, let's see if we have any questions from councilmembers. Councilmember Vogely?
Uh, we have a new map. It's social services, and as I look at it right here, um, I want to make sure that the two reddish colors are, in fact, the same color.
They are. This map, uh, as you can see with all the tables in it, uh, and this, for anybody who's watching, uh, you can find this on the Planning Department's Active Code Amendment Projects webpage, where we have all the information about this and other ordinances that we're working on. Very complicated one, and, uh, having a whole bunch of colors wasn't going to help anything. So the general idea behind the colors was prohibited or mostly prohibited, restricted, and mostly permitted. So, uh, all the details are in those tables there.
Thank you, and I also appreciate the, um, the, uh, the keys, the legend, if you will, for these maps, uh, because it's all right there, all of those Ps and As and Ss and Tens and Nines, and it gives. I just, quick story, I remember when trying to get, I remember being in the foyer before being up here and seeing a board with all, with, you know, land use stuff, and Megan Dunn was there. I'm like, Megan, how do you, what do you, how do you even know what this is? She's like, you'll figure it out. I'm like, okay. And now I have even more help with figuring it out. So, thank you. That's really all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, I did, thank you, um, for clarifying some of the language and going back and evaluating the first proposal. Good work. Thanks for working with, uh, the council. And, uh, we all want the best product that we can when it comes to these codes. They don't get changed very often, so, um, thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilmembers Arlingo?
On the subject of, well, first of all, thanks, yes, absolutely, uh, administration and planning. Uh, that, that was really very helpful. We had some things specifically and some concerns to respond to, and it's complicated stuff. We want to avoid all the, um, unintended consequences or wrinkles that we can. I'm, I'm satisfied that we are working diligently on that. Uh, in terms of anticipating things, I guess, um, I've been paying more attention to some of the questions about flexibility and management plans, because we need to make this work, and those management plans, and how we actually, I shouldn't say enforce, I mean really execute them, and work with, for example, the county in the case of the purchase of the hotel. Um, and, and one thing I noticed in terms of flexibility, there was a change to language, uh, that now says, "The managing agency shall maintain an admissions process that adequately provides for the safety and welfare of residents of the facility and community with particular attention to the safety of children and other vulnerable residents," and so on in details. That tells me that we have a responsibility to, um, these management plans, I don't think they should be one-way. We make them the best way we can, and then we're dealing with a human population and an environment around there, the community and the, and the neighbors. I hope that the management plan and the execution of that will be a two-way thing, where we learn what goes on, and that our modifications to some of this aren't so unusual if they need to be modified. I think we have an obligation to pay attention to that, to seek, really to require feedback about how those things are working, feedback from those who are executing the management plan, and those who are the neighbors and other community members, to see how these things are actually working. And looking around at this myself, I'm, I'm relatively new to it. I had heard differing and some generally sort of vague things about how well these facilities were working, what their effects were on the neighbors. And I think we need to do more of that. I hope that our management plans, I, I'm, I think we want to see them executed in a good spirit and entered into in a good spirit, and then it's really up to us to see how that's actually working, and then be ready if we need to, and, to take further action, if we need to add specifics or add some specific conditions, uh, to make these things work, because we really need to, but we have a lot of neighbors who've expressed concerns, and, and we, we need to, need to handle those as well. So, and thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Vogely?
Just as long as nobody else. Um, I'm not asking at this point to look into the RCW about religious organizations being allowed to have, um, supportive housing shelters, um, but what do I need to do to get it back to the Planning Commission? Because I think when I had asked earlier, uh, since that was such a big change, um, that it would probably need to go back to the Planning Commission. So I want, I want this to pass, um, but I want that to be looked at as well. So I don't know if I'm asking legal or planning director or council, um, about how we can possibly increase the organizations that are allowed to apply for supportive housing in residential zones that they're currently not permitted. Yorick, I'm going to, I mean, ask Yorick, Stephen.
I definitely know the procedural, uh, the procedural aspects of it and some of the policy reasons, but, um, how legislation would be initiated by the council? I'm going to turn to my right.
I think we're going to need to get back to you to determine the best path forward. I think the conversation with the mayor makes sense to elected official to elected official to talk through some of, um, how that initiative and how it could be moved forward, so. That's my two cents, Ramsey, I don't know if you have any other feedback tonight? If not, we'll get back to you.
Certainly, um, if council directed the legal to work on drafting something, and there's two votes, then that's, like any other legislation, that's how we'd, uh, move forward with it.
I was just wondering too, and I'll certainly take a second, if that's what is necessary. Um, curious, I mean, going to the Planning Commission, so that's like something different that I haven't, like, done yet. So, uh, that's why I'm asking such a detailed question.
Well, just, any type of legislation that, that has to go, you know, certain, certain types of legislation dealing with zoning and stuff have to go through the Planning Commission, but it's just, it's still just legislation by council, it's just an extra step that's required in the process, so it's initiated the exact same way as any other.
Okay. Then that's what I want to have happen. Make it so. Sure, I make a motion to make that so. No, sorry, um, to have the Planning Commission, please, put on their calendar, uh, the legislative opportunity for change for the RCW, whatever number it is, to get supportive housing, uh, with different organizations, other than just the, I don't know what the numbers are. I see Lori is very confused at my speech.
I'm wondering if, um, Councilmember Schwab, who's on the legislative committee with, um, Deputy Mayor Nick Harper, if that, if it makes sense to talk at that level as well about this?
Let's just put a second out there. I'll take a second, I'm changing, uh, something later on, eventually. If you understand.
I, I would like a little bit more, um, clarity, so if you're not in a rush, we have several, um, committee meetings that are going to discuss our legislative agenda.
Well, it would be, yeah.
I do not believe this is.
It'd be great to have you attend.
I, I do not believe this is a legislative agenda item. I think this is a Planning Commission thing, as I understand it. There are three ways that an item can get on the Planning Commission agenda. It can be citizen-initiated, mayor-initiated, or council-initiated, and I'm not exactly sure how the council-initiated thing works, it's been a while since we've done that. So, um, if, if we can wait on that, why don't we have administration come back and bring us some information at the next week's meeting to find out exactly how this would go, and what we need to ask. And that will give you time to find out also which RCW we're, which RCW we're talking about, so everyone else will know.
It's the asterisk nine, which might be in here.
Does that sound official?
But yes, I will accept that. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, where were we? We are, we've received public comments, uh, any further, yes, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, uh, Hi York. Uh, at last week's meeting, I had the question about where parks fell on the, on the, on the, on the key here, and you provided an answer, so I was hoping you could just share it, so the public could be updated as well.
Yes, uh, the park open space zone is one that doesn't appear on the use matrix, but there is a section of city code, uh, it's at the bottom of nineteen-oh-five, uh, and that section of code lays out the uses that are permitted within that zone. It is parks only in that zone. So every other use is prohibited, um, and I don't believe that there is a route to cite those uses on those park zones. So when I sent the, the maps out, same ones that are available on the web, we colored those park zones in red.
Great. One thing that was mentioned was that if there was, if the big one hits, and there's a need for, like, a mass casualty, emergency sheltering, tenting type thing, then that would be, that would fall under the mayor's designation of a emergency order, is that correct? And so we could use a park for something along those lines.
Correct. Wide latitude when the disaster situation, when there's emergency declarations to skirt around all sorts of rules.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I'm seeing that I went in the wrong order here, but it's, okay. Uh, we will, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We're taking that role on the, a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, and I'm taking that, uh, liberty to say that we are all part of the public too, so we get to be in the public hearing. Now we will entertain a motion to adopt item eleven, adopt an ordinance amending the Everett Municipal Code to bring it into conformity with recently enacted changes in state housing laws, et cetera.
Councilmember Ryan, so moves?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments before we call the roll? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. Now we move on to item twelve, Council Bill two-two-zero-seven-dash-three-six, third and final reading, adopt an ordinance amending the Everett Municipal Code to bring it into conformity with recently enacted state, changes in state housing laws relating to removing limits on number of residents in a dwelling, amending EMC chapters nineteen-point-zero-four definitions, nineteen-point-zero-five uses, nineteen-point-zero-eight residential uses and development standards, and nineteen-point-three-four parking, loading, and access requirements. Uh, the public hearing on this is still open, so I'll say, uh, Yorick, do you have any presentation or comments on this for us?
Not necessarily, again, this has been briefed, uh, previously. I'd be happy to offer a recap if you'd like, or answer any, any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Schwab?
Yeah, just, just one thing that, that basically it's more of a holistic issue. I'd like, um, I'd like, uh, basically a repeat, um, of a presentation of some of our planned, um, homeless shelters at some point down the road at the convenience administration. I know we have the budget and that sort of thing. I'm hearing from the community that there's just a need for more information, and I think that a lot of the assumptions that are being made in a negative direction are based on the lack of information. So if we could just, I know we have two, couple projects coming up, so maybe there's some timing, um, when we have some decision-making, that just kind of repeat presentation. I think the, the staff's done a good job so far, uh, I just think we need to do it again.
Yeah, agree, agree. Okay, and, uh, let me see, from Angie, do we have any residents that would like to? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to follow up on, uh, Councilmember Schwab's comment. Um, I think that that, you know, the, the vacuum is filled with fears in this case, and, um, we are, um, we are in a situation in some of these cases where, uh, residents may be housed there now with no management plan, with no supervision on site. So ironically, in some of these cases, where we will have, say, for example, at the Days Inn location, uh, that's not currently supervised with a management plan, with oversight and feedback and that sort of thing. So ironically, our use of that, or the eventual use of that, obviously purchased by the county and the management there, uh, will bring some oversight, some supervision, a management plan, and reporting back to that. So I think there's a, there's an opportunity there to, to make the case that this gives us a chance to, to fulfill what people want out of this, which is to provide some housing, but also to protect the interests of those around there. So that's why I think, uh, I would like to hear more, and I think we can all do more, especially in our outreach to our own communities, if we understand more specifically what that, what that management will be and the benefits of that. And so I'd, I'd like more of that as you can provide it, uh, in, in the next month or two, especially if it's possible in that time.
Thank you. Any other questions on the item twelve, before we see what residents have to say? Angie, did we have any, um, residents sign up to speak on this item?
We do not.
Thank you, and so having, uh, asked if we had any public comments, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
With motion and a second to close the public hearing, uh, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes, and do I have a motion for item twelve to adopt the ordinance before us?
Vogely, so moves, item number twelve.
Do we have a second?
Councilmember Schwab, second.
We have a motion and a second for item twelve. Are there any questions or comments before we take the roll? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. We will move on to our briefing agenda. The briefing agenda item comes before the city council, serving as a council committee of the whole, and is likely to be scheduled at a future meeting. And I'd like to invite Tom Hinkson, our transit director, to start the transit service briefing. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Thank you, counsel. Tom Hinkson, Transit Director. Uh, tonight, I want to introduce to you, probably for some of you for the first time, Mike Schmider. Go to take your chair, sir. Uh, Mike is our operations manager, but a couple of years ago, we lost our planning manager, and then COVID hit. And Mike and his team have worked for the last couple of years of managing change and implementing change, sometimes a couple of times a week. I mean, it's just been crazy. But we are now, since last October, in a season of rebuilding. And so Mike is here to share with you the process that we've gone through and what we would like to do. But I want to personally thank Mike, uh, for his work in putting an excellent team together. And you will see that the results have been very positive.
Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, and it is a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. And, uh, we're going to be looking at a review of transit service, uh, kind of where we've been and a proposal for twenty twenty-three and beyond. Uh, this is an informational briefing and an outline of coming service changes that we're proposing. And at the end of it, Tom will come back and make a few closing comments, so dive right in. It's no secret that service levels for transit agencies across the nation fell in dramatic fashion during the pandemic. Some agencies experienced as much as an eighty percent reduction in ridership. Slowly, ridership has begun to return, but then the obstacle to putting more service on the street for most agencies has been staffing. The chronic lament of almost every transit agency has been the inability to attract and retain enough operators and other staff to provide the service that agencies want to restore. And while we're talking about staffing, I do want to comment and recognize the remarkable resilience of Everett Transit frontline personnel. Our community is blessed to have its own trainlet system, a system that has and continues to remarkably perform well above average both during the pandemic and during this recovery period. Operators, schedulers, inspectors, maintenance staff, and other frontline employees have and continue to show extraordinary resilience and dedication to serving our community. So just a huge shout out to them and all that they've done. So immediately before the onset of the pandemic in February of twenty twenty, our monthly fixed route service was just over eight thousand hours. Our monthly ridership was just under a hundred and twenty thousand hours, and we had sixty-eight full-time operators on fixed route. By December of twenty twenty, these hours had dropped dramatically, and ridership was forty-four percent of what it had been one month prior to the pandemic. With lower service levels and many employees stepping out of the workplace to retire, we then had just fifty-five fixed route operators. Coming back to the present, we are back up to over seven thousand service hours, coming back, pardon me, and have restored ninety-three percent of our pre-pandemic service. Monthly ridership is now over ninety thousand, and this represents a recu, a recovery of seventy-five percent of pre-pandemic ridership. I'm going to pause here to emphasize this, that this is the highest percentage of returning ridership in the entire region by any transit agency. We are excited about that. On the paratransit side, you can see the similar story, but where it follows a different trajectory is on the recovery element. In December of twenty twenty, our ridership had dropped by sixty-eight percent. And even today, our ridership is still right about fifty-three percent of what it was pre-pandemic. The main reason for that is that a very large number of trip attractors, uh, for paratransit, uh, users were closed down during the pandemic and have yet to reopen. So, uh, these opportunities for seniors and individuals with disabilities have disappeared. And without those opportunities, paratransit's ridership recovery will continue to lag behind that of fixed route. A significant milestone for us in service recovery on the fixed route side was our service change in October of twenty twenty-one. While we made numerous adjustments, including four service changes in one month during the, during the pandemic, and then more as we've maneuvered our way through the recovery, this service change in October of twenty twenty-one was an eighteen percent increase, and we made key modifications that netted very positive results. In particular, the Route Two, which connects Everett Mall to Mariner Park and Ride and serves Mariner High School and Voyager Middle School. The improvements we made there, uh, we, we put this as seven-day-a-week service, and we added an earlier weekday trip. And in a few slides down the road here, uh, no pun intended on that, but a few slides down the road, we'll see the percentage of increase by each of these routes that we're talking about right now, how the ridership has rebounded. On the Route Four, this connects Everett Community College to Everett Station via the Delta and Riverside Neighborhoods on Walnut. And the improvements that we made here, uh, we modify the routing to provide essential service to Riverside Business Park and connect people to employment opportunities in that area. And then we also added earlier service, uh, to start it earlier during the weekdays. The Route Six, Everett, connects Everett Station to the waterfront via downtown on Providence's Pacific Campus. And, uh, the improvements here is we restored this seven-day-a-week service. This route was wholly suspended during much of the pandemic. And, uh, it was suspended in order to repurpose its resources on other routes, such as the Route Seven, where we provided ghost trips. Now, ghost trips are not nearly as scary as they might sound. Ghost trips were trips that we inserted between trips that were shown on the public schedule. So if it was leaving every thirty minutes or so, we would, on fifteen minutes, we would insert a trip that wasn't on the public facing schedule, solely to keep it from being overcrowded and to provide the safest, uh, transit options that people could have at that time. And so we did that through much of the pandemic. The improvement to the Route Six was we restored it to seven-day-a-week service. The Route Seven, Route Seven is our most heavily used route and connects North Everett to South Everett via Broadway, Everett Station, Downtown, Rucker, and Evergreen Way. And the improvements that we made there is we returned the bulk of the day to fifteen-minute service frequency. This was an increase from thirty and, uh, twenty and thirty-minute service intervals and more closely resembled what we had provided pre-pandemic. And then that brings us to the twenty-nine. And the twenty-nine is our Swiss Army knife. It does everything. It connects North and South Everett from Everett Community College to Everett Mall via Walnut Street, Downtown, Everett Station, Lowell, South Broadway, Nineteenth Avenue Southeast, Silver Lake, and South Everett Freeway Station Park and Ride. The improvement that we did, that we, uh, made to this route, uh, went from hourly and every forty-five-minute service to thirty-minute service during almost the entire service day. And as you'll see in a moment, this additional service has been soaked up in dramatic fashion. We also added later service. And, uh, so if we look at the ridership numbers on each of these routes from the month immediately prior to the service change, and compare them to eight months after the service change, you can see the positive impacts. Bottom line is that eight of our nine routes experienced double-digit increases in ridership percentages. Only one route, the Route Eighteen with service from the Muckelteo Ferry to Everett Station, saw a decline. And this was largely the result of, um, challenges that the Washington State ferry system faced in providing two-boat service on, on that crossing. So we have then a net increase of twenty-five percent ridership after implementing these changes. And again, this puts our ridership at seventy-five percent of pre-pandemic levels, so. Fist pump. All right, so where, uh, do we go from here? In twenty twenty-two, we have seen unprecedented legislation passed at the federal and the state levels to improve public transportation. These include the bipartisan infrastructure law passed earlier this year, which, in addition to many other areas, provides almost ninety billion dollars in guaranteed funding for transit and the net, over the next five years. This legislation expands public transit options across every state in the country and replaces thousands of deficient transit vehicles with clean, zero-emission vehicles. It improves the accessibility for elderly, for the elderly and persons with disabilities. And the funds available through this legislation are largely awarded through competitive grants, and it is these funds that we will be targeting primarily for vehicle replacements. So that's the bipartisan infrastructure law. The second piece of legislation was the Move Ahead Washington, uh, which was passed this spring in Olympia. This legislation includes historic investments in transit, more than four billion dollars in appropriations for transit and active transportation projects such as bike lanes, walkable communities. For the first time in our state's history, this package invests more in transit and active transportation than new highway capacity. A key part of this legislation is funding provided to transit agencies, enabling agencies across our state to let youth eighteen and under ride free. This is a fantastic program, and it creates access and opportunity for a brand-new generation of transit rider, riders, and lowers transportation costs for families. Everett Transit will fare free for youth eighteen and under on July first. So how exactly does this impact ET's bottom line? The Move Ahead program will annually provide approximately two million dollars of unrestricted funding to improve transit service and to reimburse us for the fare revenue not collected from youth eighteen and under. So within this new landscape, we are moving forward with what we believe are important improvements in service that are in keeping with the funding and spirit of these pieces of legislation and subsequent expectations of transit service that accompany them. So let's take a look at a few of these. The Route Eighteen, uh, Muckelteo, again, Muckelteo Ferry to Everett Station, this is a needed housekeeping, uh, move, but one in which we're going to optimize it and add some value to it. So in the spring of twenty twenty-three, the Edgewater Bridge will be closed on Muckelteo Boulevard for replacement. This is expected to last at least a year, and there are no immediately viable paths around it for transit to, to navigate in that, in that immediate area. Our solution is to revive our currently suspended Route Seventy commuter service. This was suspended, this is commuter service from the ferry terminal to Seaway Transit Center slash Boeing, uh, that was suspended due to extraordinarily low ridership during the pandemic. And although we brought it back, we wound up suspending it again. Uh, so bringing this back, but then also, so as that, uh, comes into, um, Seaway Transit Center, that we would continue the route and provide directs, a direct service option to Everett Station. But importantly, that as it resumes its route on Muckelteo Boulevard, it will stop by the new Veterans Administration outpatient clinic at, uh, two-twenty Olympic Boulevard. So we'll be able to provide a direct route option in that direct, and to that service as well. So we are excited about the opportunity that that presents for us. Route Nineteen, you might be looking at your bus schedule books and saying, what's that? I don't recognize that. This is a proposed route. And it connects Everett Station to Everett Community College and Washington State University via North Colby and restores direct service to Providence Medical's, pardon me, to Everett High School, as well as convenient and accessible service to Providence Medical Center, Seattle Children's Clinic North, and the Cancer Partnership. And again, we're excited, uh, to be able to, the opportunity to restore this service that, on North Colby and these key destinations. So the Route Three from Everett Station to Seaway Transit Center, most of the Route Three remains unchanged, but we are proposing that we restore direct service to Evergreen Middle School on Beverly Lane, while also providing another convenient and accessible option and direct connection between Evergreen Way and, and specifically on Evergreen Way, the new Four Corners apartment homes that are being built on the old Kmart site. Connecting that with job opportunities in the southwest industrial area, Boeing, and convenient connections to Ever, uh, pardon me, Community Transit, um, uh, Swift Green Line. The, the remainder of the changes that we're exploring will largely be, pardon me, will largely be shaped through the public outreach process and range from added frequency to the Route Twelve on Casino Road to modifications that would extend the reach of the Route Two before it connects to Mariner Park and Ride. This extends to possible modifications to the Route Eight to more efficiently distribute its service in the, in South Everett. So we're looking forward to laying out some options to our customers and hearing from them directly on how these possibilities should unfold and, and what exactly they're going to look like. Now, some of the changes that will occur are of necessity. For example, our Route Eight currently terminates at Airport Road and Evergreen Way. We are, as this picture demonstrates, facing some very real safety issues in this location. And from a health standpoint, we also have concerns for our employees. We no longer have consistent and reliable access to facilities in this area for driver recovery. You can read that as we don't have reliable access to restrooms in that area any longer. Um, this is one of our longest routes, and that, as you can imagine, the operators feel that, so. So we will need to make some, some changes here, and we want to hear from our customers, not just about this, but, uh, but all of the South End routes that we've just discussed. And, um, and what changes make the most sense and provide the most benefit. So we're, we're eagerly looking for them to weigh in on that. Another challenge that we're facing is that of deferred maintenance. In two thousand and fourteen, Transit moved the sole staff position that we had dedicated to the maintenance and installation of bus shelters, bus stop signs, and associated amenities to another city department. And with that was the idea that we would then pay them for services at overtime to, to perform this, these services for us. Now, that department and transit are in concurrence, that they do not have the capacity to keep up with the level of maintenance required by an active transit system. Thus, we've seen replacement and the upkeep of glass. This may look like, wow, that's some really clear, fine, clean glass. That's because there's not a pane of glass in that shelter right now. But we've seen the replacement, the upkeep of the glass, the shelter structures, and other bus stop amenities fall farther and farther behind since that time, and this too needs to be addressed. So in brief, this is how we have recovered to this point from the pandemic. And, uh, this is an outline of where we're proposing to go in the future. So connecting people to life, it's more than a quaint phrase for us. It is, in fact, our mission, and it is, in reality, it's our passion. This is what we did before the pandemic. This is what we did during the pandemic. And with an unprecedented level of federal and state support for transit, coupled with an enthusiastic and committed transit team, this is what we plan to boldly continue to do in twenty twenty-three and beyond. So at this time, I'm going to invite Tom back up to make a few additional comments, and then we can field any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mike. So as Mike said, this is our plan for twenty twenty-three. We will have a public process. It'll probably kick off late October through November. It will include a public hearing before council at some point, uh, towards the end of that process. And then, uh, after that is complete, we will bring to you a budget amendment and give you a plan of how we can fund this. It's not in the budget that you're seeing right now, because we haven't finished our planning, but that's when you'll see that. And then the other thing that I wanted to share with you is that since we are doing a public process, we're going to take that opportunity to also address our paratransit policy that we've talked about in the past. And so we'll use that opportunity to address that with our customers as well, and you will expect that as being part of the public hearing, so. Thank you for your time, and would ask any, or questions you may have?
Do we have questions and comments from council? Everyone, we'll start, we'll go down the line, Mary, starting with Councilmember Fossey.
Uh, I just want to say, well done, and, uh, thank you. This is, uh, mostly exciting, really good news, and, uh, I'm excited about, uh, nineteen and, and the changes, um, coming forward. And it was really helpful to know about some of the challenges that you're, that you're seeing out there. It's, and I'm super thankful for Move Ahead Washington. But when it comes to, uh, the workforce, uh, what kind of, um, level are you at as compared to, uh, pre-pandemic is, as far as, uh, staffing?
Yeah, so right now, uh, we're, we're, we're in the hiring process right now, and that is one of the, um, one of the reasons for our success, and I've shared this with Tom, is I've been with Everett Transit for fourteen years. I started as a driver, been a supervisor, have been a trainer, and I, now I, I'm doing what I'm doing now. Um, and I've loved every step of that way. But one of the things that we've always noticed about Everett Transit that I've noticed is that the rivers run to us, that people want to work for us. And you always want to be that organization that people want to come to and work for. Whatever it is that drives them to us, um, we're grateful for that. So we are in a position where we are getting the number of applicants that we're looking for, and they're high-quality applicants. So we are looking to add, um, fill some openings. So we are looking to add, fill some openings that we have right now. We've got a solid, just gone through all the interviews, we've got really solid candidates lined up, and we're going to be starting a new fixed route class October 17th, and then we're looking to start a, a paratransit class right after that, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. I don't doubt it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmembers are lingo.
My, my sense of it is, is that this is sort of a, if you increase supply, then you get demand. I mean, there, you encounter naysayers who say, oh, those people just won't ride transit. And there are pros and cons to transit, and I've looked at some of that in the past when I was doing regular commuting, but I guess my sense of it is that you feel at this point that there's a kind of a positive slope. If you provide more seats, then you get more ridership.
Yeah, we provided 18% increase in ridership. It resulted in a 25, pardon me, 18% increase in service. It resulted in a 25% increase in ridership. So yes, there's a direct correlation.
And then you mentioned the ghost trips. I guess if I understand it correctly, that was not necessarily because those buses were full to the gills, but because you wanted to provide some social distancing, enough of that to be scaled with the, with the, or were those buses just absolutely full?
No, you're absolutely right. It was to provide the safest option, which meant social distancing on the buses, pardon me, the buses. And there was specific guidance provided through the state on exactly where those capacity limits should be. So that's why we inserted trips between publicly scheduled trips in order to reduce that, that crowding potential.
I guess the only other comment I had is watching some of the stories about drug use on buses and sound transit, mostly to the south of us, and some of the concerns are, I guess I see a particular hazard there that I want to be really attentive to, because I can see if we don't, if we don't take action, support you, and, and the department is needed in that, that, that's a, that's a vicious cycle we could get into where we discourage ridership, and I'm particularly interested in, in paying attention to that. So any feedback, suggestions?
If I may, we have just launched a program that is kind of a combination of see something, say something, and our own attitude is not on our bus. And so we worked with the police department, we have a plan, we saw what happened in Seattle. That won't happen in Everett because the way we can all mutually respond to that issue. And, and so we're aware of it, but we're just not going to let it happen in Everett.
Well, thank you. You have our, my cooperation and enthusiasm for that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Vogel.
Make it so. Okay, so, and I think I heard, you know, at the end of your spiel, some references to Star Wars, Trek, sorry. Anyways, because, let's see, second page, service and staffing overview, paratransit, mostly service hours. Because the ridership was lower for paratransit, and it's continuing to be lower, you might have already answered this question towards the end, but that would be kind of a good thing for money, right, in the whole budgeting? Because I know that paratransit costs exceptionally a lot per trip.
Per ride cost, yeah.
You know, without going into all of those details. So that saved money, and that, I think, is why at the end of this, you mentioned that you're going to look into the paratransit contract?
Yeah, so the, the level of service that we provide per the Americans with Disabilities Act, we can, we can exceed the level of service that's required, and that's what Everett Transit has done. So for example, age qualified at 65 is not part of the ADA. But we've continued to do that. That's actually a small representation or a small percentage of our overall ridership. But there is, because the lower ridership, yeah, there, there's fewer miles being put on the vehicles, there's fewer, there's less fuel being consumed, and we actually have less employees right now. We're still, we'll be hiring more, but we'll still be, we were at our peak, we were at 33 fixed route, pardon me, paratransit operators. We're still at 21 right now. We've been authorized up to 24 for right now, and that's, we're getting there. But the truth is that eventually that ridership will recover. It just won't fully recover exactly on the same trajectory that fixed route ridership has.
Thank you. Route 29, I know I have gotten some questions, and it sounds like it has, or you just said that it's increased, but does it go east on 75th from Old Broadway? It used to go down into, I can't remember the neighborhood, I'm sorry.
Valley View.
Yes. So it stopped going that way. Is it going there again, or is it still only on Old Broadway?
It is not, so, yeah, that's a good question, and we have received some inquiries about that as well. 75th Street Bridge over I-5 is not a pedestrian, necessarily a pedestrian-friendly bridge.
Accurate.
We have slight service into Valley View, and even in my time here, a number of different ways. There was the Route 16 at one time, the Route 29 has gone down there, like, on an alternating basis, every other trip would go down there. The, the neighborhood down there has voiced concern about having vehicles that size traveling narrow streets with children on them. And so we are actually looking, and we've been discussing some different options that might be available apart from putting a 40-foot bus down there, but recognizing that there is a population down there that does need transit service.
Okay, thank you. Hooray, Route 18 for when the bridge is being replaced and also stopping at the Veterans Center. So just want to put that out there. I would really, I'm going to put in my public comment, I would really like to get from Evergreen Way to Mariner Park and Ride on 4th. I really want that to happen.
Noted.
Thank you, and now it's, you know, going to be written down for years to come. There was one more thing, and now I've forgotten it because I didn't write good enough notes, but definitely 4th Ave, and how soon can you get that happening? That's all. Thank you.
Good feedback, thank you.
Councilmember Schwalm.
Yeah, thank you. When we do combine Route 18 and 70, how far west on Muckelteo Boulevard? I'm assuming you're going to just turn at Glenwood?
Yeah, so following the Route 70 original path, it comes up, it comes up Muckelteo Speedway, and it's going to go up the hill at 84th Street, it's going to get on 526, it's going to get on the Seaway Boulevard, and it's going to do the, the curbside stop on Seaway Boulevard. The plan is for, at that point, at Seaway Transit Center, it'll stop there, and then it will continue down Seaway Boulevard, and it will get on Merrill Creek Parkway, follow that to Glenwood, Glenwood down to Muckelteo Boulevard, and continue its regular route at that point. And at, at that point, it becomes the 18 again.
So then the area, that's what I assume, so the area west of Glenwood won't be serviced until the bridges?
Correct, yeah. Right now, at least paratransit service will continue, but, but fixed route service, there's no viable way for us to maneuver a bus back in there.
Thank you. Just a couple more. You talked about some of the safety concerns there in South Everett, at 128th and Airport Road, or the Highway 99 and Airport Road. There is also a couple other, is there some CT routes that, that connect there too?
That's correct.
So there'd be some other options if we do some modifications in that area?
Correct. So you have an intersection there that has both the Swift Blue Line, it's going to run north-south, and the Green Line.
Green Line, both, right.
It's going to run the east and west. The difference for us is that we actually, right now, our service terminates there, and we require layover facilities down there. They're just passing through there. So there's a little bit of a different dynamic for them.
Okay. Also, just a question, if you, I'm sure you've considered about Route 6. We're seeing an increase in development in both downtown and the port, so I, I don't know if there is, is there an outreach process that we do with businesses, an advertising component? I'm assuming, I see some advertisement, but it seems to me that it'd be a good focus to increase the ridership for that route. Seems there would be a big need.
There will, and, and there's some questions about the final determination of the routing of the Route 6 from where it goes right now to where we believe it could or should go to maximize delivery of customers to businesses in the downtown core.
And then one last question about open source codes for bus locations. Do we have those? Is there apps that use locators that can route the buses, know when the bus is going to arrive, like Move It?
Yeah, so a number of the, the applications that are out there for, like Next to Bus, they will access GTFS, and that's the Global Transit Feed specification, and so that's what, we can put things out there in that, and right now, using ETA, you can access that information, and you can dial or text and find out when the next bus is coming.
Do you know how, do you have any numbers on how that's used, or?
I don't at my fingertips or right in the forefront of my, my thoughts right now have the usage, the adoption, Tom.
I, I don't have the, the exact numbers, but if you, I know that we, I know that we reported it in the Transportation Development Plan in one of the earlier slides, and, but I can send that to you.
I was just wondering.
It is heavily used, though.
As far as a promotion, or if there's even any need to, I knew.
No, the, the ETA or Everett Transit Arrival is our own product, and it just works for Everett Transit bus stops, and it's been quite effective. It really reduced the number of phone calls that people were making to our customer service office, so that was allowed us to not have to staff it as much. But there is a conversation regionally to look at some sort of global platform that all transit agencies will use, and we will certainly be part of that conversation when it happens.
Thank you. Vice President Tui.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much, Mike and Tom. That was a great presentation, and I just, I don't have any further questions, but I want to just thank you guys for being so thoughtful as you expand and get more services and really keying in on key locations like schools and hospitals and new housing projects and new businesses. I think that's just great, so job well done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. We don't get good news very often, so resurrect that for a minute. I wanted to revisit the staffing question and training program. So is it Everett Transit that provides training, or are there other pipelines for route operators and transit operators through, like, local community colleges or other training programs where we could, I'm thinking about our legislative agenda and asking for help with workforce development and whatnot, so I was wondering if it's on Everett Transit's responsibility to train operations or train drivers, or if there's other groups that are providing the same training?
Well, the employees that we get sometimes come to us with previous experience, but it's certainly not required, because we have a full-blown training program that we can take somebody who has no large vehicle driving experience and safely train them up to be a never-transit operator, whether that's fixed route or paratransit. So we can go, but we are exploring some innovative driver training options that, that there's still, it's probably premature to speak of them here, but we are using some innovative techniques to increase our, our already successful recruiting strategy.
Great. I was curious about the, the data, so I, I guess it's more, maybe more anecdotally, but so they're, I understand February 2020, pre-pandemic, December, like, peak pandemic, and then July, but I was also curious how those numbers would also reflect the natural ebb and flow of ridership over, like, seasonally and month-by-month, summer ridership versus winter ridership, and if there's enough of a flux of the data that it would maybe make the numbers a little bit different.
Yeah, I, the only thing that, that's a good point, and the only thing that I would say to that is one, one thing that we're seeing this year that we didn't see as much of in 2021 is that there's more in-person schooling. So students are present in the schools more so this year, but, and so that's probably some of that, that, that's happening. But there are so many moving parts in the post-pandemic recovery that it's hard to pinpoint one single causality for it.
Great. Let's see, I would like to provide a suggestion, and instead of a ghost route, it's called a surprise route.
Surprise route, I like that.
And I'm glad to see the consideration for changing some of the built environment around and improving, or restoring the built environment around some of the bus stops so that folks, especially in our dark December days, can have good lighting and better access to just get on and off the bus, and sheltering, and benches, and all sorts of things that can make folks feel safe and welcome and comfortable when they're waiting for the bus, because I think those, just those small changes, especially lighting for public safety purposes, would be really helpful for just making people, to incentivize people to, to take the bus and be willing to be at a bus stop for a little bit. Folks do have suggestions for, if they'd like, or if they'd like to make a request for a route or a specific stop to be included, how can somebody do that?
Well, we have Customer Service Line, and those customer service, depending upon what the nature of it is, and if it's a service suggestion, they come to me and our service planning inspector, and so we address those, we, we don't lose track of them, we keep them, and they inform our service planning process. So I will say our antenna, our antenna are highly tuned to hearing where the, where the needs are. And this is something that I'll, I'll share, is that we can think, we can think that we have our finger on the pulse of what the public wants, but we want to absolutely hear from the public and confirm that what we're sensing and what we're seeing in information and what we're reading in our, in our, in our community is exactly the right thing for them to do, because there's way more need for transit than we can provide, okay? Everybody wants a bus, and they want it right now, and they want it to go exactly where they're going, but then nobody wants that many buses on the road. Not really, they don't, they, they really don't. So, but we're, we're very focused on hearing what the community wants and responding to that.
So I'm thinking ahead to when light rail eventually comes and when my youngest is out of high school, but anyways. And how route planning through Everett Transit could help inform the route planning for light rail. So I know the 8 and the 12 kind of goes where the proposed dog leg over to Payne is going to, it kind of touches in those areas, so I'd be curious if there's a way to include a route that goes along with the proposed light rail routes are, to see if they are popular, if they do, if they are well-written, if, if it works out for folks. So just tossing that idea balloon out there is like a way to, to have Everett Transit just better inform what's coming down the, the rail through light rail eventually, and then also if, like, if it is better for the region to have the, just the fluid aspect of being able to change stations and bus stops and transit areas and whatnot, instead of having a, a fixed route, or just something to help inform the process that we're not just guessing what ridership's going to look like in 2037. So putting that out there is my commentary. Love to hear your thoughts, too.
Sure. So the, the reality of light rail arriving in Everett, first in South Everett, and then ultimately at Everett Station looms large and casts a very big shadow over everything that we're, we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you. And just for my own personal curiosity, I was wondering how route numbers are chosen?
There is no, well, I, I could tell you.
It's in a mama hat.
But then he'd have to kill you.
But then we'd be divulging a huge secret. Actually, there is no real huge.
Okay.
I got nothing.
No process.
I got nothing.
It's a secret. It's a secret. It's a ghost.
Just for, it's a ghost. And then just for my last little bit of commentary, I'm always happy to see increased access to transit and ridership, especially in light of a week without driving next week. So I'm going to keep banging my drum that if there's any way to increase the Free Youth for, Free Ridership for Youth Program 21, and Free Ridership for Veterans and Paratransit, that'd be amazing. So just putting that out there again. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
And I will just, I, I'll echo some of the comments that were made. I'm really happy to see us restoring service. I've been a very vocal champion for more public transportation. I've been a very vocal champion for more public transportation. I do believe it is an impediment to our ability to grow our community without completely destroying the quality of life. We're already seeing or hearing, as councilmembers, we hear about traffic in neighborhoods and streets, and anybody who drives around knows that we are experiencing a real crunch of that. So I'm hoping, hopeful that this service increase will get some of those people out of their cars. I'll be curious to see if it ends up being as big as it is, because my, you know, looking at that October service change, you know, September 21, we were still a little bit in COVID, and people were still, that was when kind of the next surge was on the rise a little bit. So we may have had a little bit of depression there, so I'm not sure that the increase would be quite as big, but we'll see, and hopefully we'll see that that is big. And then remind me, you'll have a public, you're having a public process of this, you do some public meetings when you do your service change and go out to the neighborhoods and do the dog and pony show and all that other good stuff?
Yes.
Okay, great. That sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Councilmembers are lingo.
Well, a quick clarification, I guess, building on Councilmember Ryan's comment about the upcoming, the light rail. I think there's a kind of two separate things. You wouldn't necessarily have a bus that would duplicate the route of the right light rail, but you might have two buses that would do that, because the light rail takes its path, because it is one rail path with one car going that way. But you might actually have people going, the route, the bus route to duplicate, that might actually be two things coming toward the center, one coming to the southwest industrial area from the north, and one coming from the south. So the limitations or the restrictions on what a light rail can do is different than a bus, so constructing something that might evaluate that route or simulate that route might be multiple buses at different times. So I guess I did want to bring that out there, if you're thinking of doing something like that, or asking questions about what people would want, that question has multiple facets that way and might have multiple answers that would be represented by multiple buses, not one.
Yeah. Where the light rail stations ultimately wind up being placed will drive a lot of that. But we are, again, the reality, light rail is coming, and there's a lot, there's a large number of shoulders being put behind it to get it to Everett faster, and we want to see that here. And so we know it's coming, and everything we do is colored by that. So we're thinking about it, but we also recognize that not everything, not every detail is solidified in its current routing and process, so.
Yeah, well, I'm on a committee that's trying to work on that, and so I get that, and one of the things that's occurred to me in that is that a lot of the effects of that, we won't see the trains for some years, but we will see the anticipated development much sooner, and that will be supported by the buses, and so these various routes, in the end, it may be more that the use of those routes and the population growth drive the details of those, of those positions and the frequency of the trains and that sort of thing, rather than the other way around.
And the truth is that we have a great laboratory right now called Glenwood to watch where it's coming and how it's unfolding and how it's actually unfolded over the past several years. And so by taking good notes and being students of that process, we know what to, a little bit more what to expect as it gets closer to our community.
Thanks.
Councilmember Vogel.
I really like that the bus stops have been painted, the curbs, that's all. It's beautiful, and I now know where all the stops are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the briefing. We really appreciate getting the information, and we'll look forward to seeing how this unfolds for us.
Thank you.
With no further business and no executive session, we are now adjourned.